I call to me, call to meeting the planning meeting. Gosh, let's start that over. I hereby call to order the City of Bultons Planning Commission for Thursday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Vice Chair Mercado, will you lead us in the pledge?
Everybody but Stan, place their hand over their heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Canada. When they stand under God, in the world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call.
Commissioner DiFazio.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Mercado.
Chair Hamel.
Here. I don't believe there's any reordering of the agenda tonight, and there are no presentations. Approval of the minutes from our last commission meeting of April twentieth, twenty-three.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of April twenty, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor? Hi. Public comments, this is where members of the audience wishing to address the planning commission on matters not on the agenda may do so at this time. That's comments, compliments, complaints. I don't see anyone here for the public, and we probably don't have anyone on Zoom or anything.
I do not see anybody.
Okay, so we will move on to the consent calendar, there's none. Continued public hearings, none. New public hearings, none. Other business, here we go. Item number two, preliminary review of six fifty-three Avenue of Flags. The Arco gas station twenty-three dash FDP dash zero-two and twenty-three dash CUP dash zero-one. Planning Director Kiefer, will you lead us in the discussion tonight?
Yes, absolutely, I'm not sure why it's set up this way, but. Okay. Okay, thanks. Good evening Chair Hamel and members of the planning commission. So tonight is the preliminary review of the Arco gas station project and convenience store project. I do have Alex Clevest here in the audience tonight, and at the conclusion of my staff report, he will be available if the planning commission has any questions of the applicant. But I'll just go ahead and get started here. So just before I get into some of the project details, I wanted to give a little bit of background for some of the planning commissioners that may not be as familiar with this project. So the, the original project was submitted back in twenty eighteen. And staff and planning commission were working with the applicants over a several year period on refining project design and details. However, in October of last year, the planning commission did deny the Arco project, and the primary reason for, for the denial at that time. Oh, no problem.
Going out, just, just.
Oh, sure. Was for inconsistency of project plans with the architectural design style of the Avenue of Flags specific plan, which is Art Deco. The, as part of that denial, however, the planning commission did, as part of the adoption of that resolution, allow the applicant to submit a new application within one year of the denial. So, or after, but there's specific provisions in the code that, you know, require certain things if they're going to resubmit an application within the one-year period, which they have done. So a new application for a new project submittal was submitted in June twenty twenty-three, and we are here tonight for the preliminary review, which is a requirement of the municipal code upon a formal submittal. So just to kind of give a little bit background, get a bit of background, most of the site amenities and project details remain the same from the prior application. And I'll go over those details, and there are some minor modifications throughout, but the majority of the site amenities and such remain largely the same. The substantial revisions to the project are to the architectural design, which is consistent with what the, you know, what, what, in response to the planning commission denial of the previous application late last year. So project location, so this is again located within the Avenue of Flags specific plan on the very northern end there, on the corner of Central Avenue and Avenue of Flags. The zoning for the project is general commerce, underlying zoning is general commercial, but it is within the Avenue of Flags specific plan. Current uses on the site are some U-Haul truck and trailer rentals, some auto repair and some miscellaneous vehicle storage. Adjacent land uses are commercial to the south and east, to the north is just a roadway and some commercial uses, and to the west, most notably here, is a residential condominium complex. So I'll talk a little bit about that as part of the project review. So this is just a little bit of the regulatory framework. General plan, underlying zoning is general commercial, and it's a general commercial land use. Yeah, it is again a part of the Avenue of Flags specific plan, so it is required to comply.
No, you're fine.
So. I'll just read it out here, so. You know, it is within the Avenue of Flags specific plan and located in the Gateway North District, which is a travelers oriented district that encourages visitor serving and vehicle support uses. It's also in opportunity site one of the specific plan, which is suitable for proposed travel or traveler oriented services. Again, architecture must comply with Art Deco design style, which is primarily the modifications in this new submittal that have been submitted. Maximum building height is thirty-five feet, this project is twenty-four feet high or thereabout, so it's consistent with that. No, it's okay. And I'll go over this last bullet point here a little later on, but the specific plan does call for zero lot lines and a maximum of twenty-five foot setbacks are encouraged. But this is a specialty land use on an irregularly shaped lot, and so in the prior submittal, this, the, the placement of the site designer, a site layout and site and placement was deemed favorable at that time. And, and again, there has been no change to the overall site layout at this time. No, you're fine.
Anyone watching on T, on City TV, we have a little bit of technical difficulties here.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thanks, Rose. Oh, okay. Okay, so I'm gonna have to skip here, and, no, that's okay. Okay.
Oh, no.
Is it working?
No.
No. I think it could be because when you enter presentation mode, it puts it in a different screen, and you're sharing the window, so if you share your actual screen, maybe it.
Let's try that.
Yeah. So you're, share from this.
So.
We've got you in your Zoom.
Share screen, so I click this one.
Oh, I would just.
No, click this one.
This one, okay.
And then just make it larger.
Got it, okay. And I'll make this larger.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we'll make it work when we're.
I see, just kind of go through.
We're gonna make it work on the screen.
Rather than.
We're gonna share the screen, we'll just, yeah, okay.
Um.
Reduce.
But I've got a, yeah, zoom out again.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
That should work, okay, great. Okay, so just to go over some details on the site plan, so the project would include the demolition of the existing pavement and structures. There is a, it's a former, former gas station site as well, so all of that would be removed. The proposal is for a new three thousand one hundred and eighty square foot gas canopy, which includes, includes twelve gas pumps total, and a new one-story four thousand four hundred square foot commercial building, and this is again the same layout and site-specific details as the previous application. And again, it's for, the commercial building would be for a convenience store and a quick serve restaurant. Site access would be provided by two main access points on the Avenue of Flags, as well as one gate-controlled driveway on Central Avenue for fuel trucks only. There is a loading zone also proposed right about here along near Central Avenue and landscaping around the perimeter. So just to point out a few things, here is the proposed gas pumps, this is the north edge of the property, so towards the center is the, the gas pumps, and towards the south end is the parking, the majority of the parking and the commercial building. And then again, the access points are two along the avenue here and here, and a fuel truck only here on Central Avenue. So just to quickly go over the floor plan, this is the commercial building, and you can see it's split into a fourteen hundred square foot proposed restaurant use. And at this, the applicant can probably speak more to this, but at this point, they are not sure of exactly who that tenant will be. And then this is the convenience store component, and this floor plan is just, it's pretty detailed because it actually gets down to like where things are going to be placed and, and that sort of thing. So these are the building elevations, the revised building elevations, and so I did want to spend a little bit of time on this slide. And I, what I tried to do, just to kind of give you a general sense, is I minimize the previous project elevations to give you at least some sort of a sense of the level of modifications that since the previous application, what the modifications have been, and you also received, the planning commission received a copy of the architect's, the city's contract architects' design review comments. And you will notice in there that many of his prior comments on the previous submittal have been addressed. And just to summarize, and I'll go through some of the details here, but for the, the main point here is that there have been substantial revisions to the architecture, and staff in our review has felt that in general, they have addressed many of the previous comments related to architecture. So just to kind of give a sense, so this front elevation, this actually faces north. If you're like on the project site, faces north, and that's the main entrance into the convenience store, so this faces the gas canopies. And you can see, they have, it's hard, a little hard to see on here, but they've added some tower elements, some more detailing, they've broken up the walls, they've provided windows that are more shaped, consistent with the Art, Art Deco design style, some more ornamentation, and just generally some more detailing that is consistent with the Art Deco design style. I, I'm just gonna point out the AMPM wall sign here, because I'll have a little bit more to say on that in, in, in a few slides here, but just to point out where it is on the elevation. So moving down, we have the right elevation, which faces Central Avenue, and the left elevation, which faces Avenue of Flags, and so there's another entry point here into the convenience store. But the same comment here, there's, there's more breaking up of the large, what were previously large plane wall expanses, some more detailing, some more verticality, more tower elements, and more window design details incorporated into this design. Moving down to the.
Just to clarify, so the, I mean, I think it's self-explanatory, but just to clarify.
Yeah.
So the one on the right actually faces the Avenue of Flags, that's the restaurant part, right? Correct?
So, okay, I'm sorry. So I, I think I, I switched it, so the right elevation, absolutely, yeah.
This one is one of the things.
Yes, yes, okay, perfect.
It faces the avenue, okay, okay, so I did have, okay, I just make sure. So the left elevation here, this is, this faces Avenue of Flags. And so then the right elevation, this, that's this one here, that faces Central Avenue. Okay, great. So this is the rear elevation, so this faces to the south, so the adjacent business there. And you can see here, there's definitely been some more tower elements incorporated, some more design details, some breaking up of the wall expanses, ornamentation, all of the things that we look for in Art Deco. And, and again, the applicant in staff's review and in the architectural consultant's review does appear to have addressed many of the concerns of the previous concerns with the Art Deco design. So just a few things to point out, again, I think I pointed out the sign here, so I have, I'll have more to say on that in a couple of slides, and also just to point out that generally the color palette that's proposed here is not totally consistent with, you know, typically what you see with Art Deco, and that's something that was brought up in the prior submittal, but you know, I think that's something that the planning commission can certainly discuss with the applicant, and the applicant might have some more information on that. And the applicants can speak more to this, but I know that obviously with Arco, there is a certain corporate design standard that they are also trying to accomplish. And so there are some elements in here that I think reflect that, and again, Alex can probably speak more to that, but I just wanted to point those two things out. But just to say that the architecture is substantially improved from staff's perspective from the prior submittal. Slide number eight, so this is the elevations for the, the gas canopy, basically. And you can see, I, I believe they, the, they tried to add a little bit of ornamentation on to the, the vertical posts there, and some Art Deco elements, you know, obviously not as much as the main commercial building, and that's something that the applicant might be able to speak more to, but they definitely, if you look at the city's architectural consultant, he, he, they did, you know, acknowledge that there was some more elements incorporated in here, especially with the materials, I think the change in materials that were proposed, so. So there's that slide, this is just some building, the building and monument signs, which is, this is just some of the detailing, so there's two monument signs proposed. And, you know, as part of the prior project, there was some desire to have, because it's the gateway into the city, to at least have some acknowledgement of that incorporated into their monument sign, which they have done here. And of course, there's the Arco brand and branding, you know, signage on here as well. And again, the Arco AMPM sign does have some back faux wood material backing it, and that, that material is not generally associated with Art Deco, but I can let the applicant speak a little bit more to that, I know that it's, it's likely has, you know, has something to do with the branding of AMPM and, and that sort of a thing. And so we can chat about that a little bit more if, if needed, but it is a relatively minor component of the overall architecture on the building, so something for the planning commission to consider.
We're talking about the AMPM sign over that door, right?
Yes, right here. And I will note that they will have to submit a master sign program with a lot more signage detailing than has been provided thus far, so we will end up seeing more details in that sign plan. And this is just a sign program summary where they're listing the square footages. And this is just um a sign program summary where they're listing the square footages. Um, I I did note here in my review that um there is a change in the overall signage square footage, so there's, I think there's just some clarification with the applicant that um we need to work through to understand where that signage addition is coming from the prior submittal. But again, a master sign program will need to be um submitted and um depending on whether or not the signage does in fact go over a threshold established in our code, a minor use permit could be required, but we'll work with the applicant, staff will work with the applicant to understand more clearly where this signage square footageers are coming from and we'll determine, you know, from there what what is ultimately needed. So lighting, um, on the lighting, there is limited design details provided. Um, so we we will need complete lighting design specifications um that are consistent with the city requirements for art deco and dark sky friendly. They do show some sconce lighting throughout the site and some security on parking lot lighting. And there is also, um, I'm skipping down to the third bullet point here, but there's also a photometric analysis included in the project plans. And um it does show offsite spillover um that exceeds the threshold in our code for foot candles. Um, particularly on the west along the west property line, which is the property that faces the residential uses, and so that's you know, they'll need to revise their photometric analysis and potentially their lighting plan as a whole to make sure that they are not um proposing light, light spill over beyond what our municipal code um allows. So and and there, it's mostly primarily along the west property line, but there is some, I believe, on the east property line a little bit as well, so they'll just need to revise that to reflect consistency with our code. Um, signage lighting, the Avenue of Flags specific plan does encourage externally lit signage, although it does allow internally illuminated signage. But I will note that one of the comments that we, that that was brought up in the prior submittal um in um sensitivity to the neighborhood, to the west, that um the, that their signage cannot be illuminated on the Central Avenue side. So that was something that came from the prior submittal. This is the landscape plan and I just wanted to point out here, I think in my review, there there seemed to be inconsistency with the base map for this plan um as compared to the rest of the the plan set, so that's gonna be included in our letter to the applicant, just to make sure that there's um consistency with the base map. I did note um in my review of the landscape plan, which is again largely similar to um the prior submittal and prior application. I believe there was an addition of an additional uh screening tree here next to the trash enclosure, which is located about here. But again, this is the sheet that has, this is the main area where there is inconsistencies with the landscape plan compared to the other plans and so um they'll need to change the space map and I'm not sure what that'll do to that additional screening tree. Um, they did add on the landscape plan some additional notes about a um screening wall that is actually a requirement of our municipal code when you have a commercial use uh adjacent to a residential use. So they have included a note here on the landscape plan that they will be providing such a wall. I believe it's four feet tall, set three feet back, but we will need additional design uh details on that wall in the re-submittal here. But yeah, again, just generally, you can see uh landscaping uh surrounding the perimeter, just to kind of buffer that, that buffer the site there. And this is just a parking analysis, so basically, they've calculated all the parking needs for all of the various uses on the site. Ultimately, the parking requirement is twenty six um parking spaces and they have provided uh twenty seven parking spaces. Now, this is this includes the twelve spaces underneath the canopy for the the gas canopies as well as parking spaces adjacent to the convenience store and there's several, I believe, on the north side of the property to meet that standard. They've included accessible and EV spaces as well into the project design. So just, I just wanted to kind of summarize just the comments as part of this with the acknowledgement that we will be sending it in complete letter, which will have the full and complete set of comments. So um that will include plannings, planning staff's comments, planning commission's comments from tonight. Um, public works, building, fire and the architectural comments as well. So I just wanted to summarize what what we have so far from planning um and then um so that way we can kind of frame our discussion and and answer any questions. So just to summarize architectural elevations, there is, you know, again, the gas canopies have made an attempt to become, to incorporate art deco design elements into them. You know, but they, they still, you know, they don't necessarily completely comply, but um the architectural consultant has looked at them and thinks that um they do incorporate a fair amount of art deco design elements. Um, the faux wood sign on the wall, so again, I think this is an element of the of the building design that incorporates a material that is not typically associated with art deco, but um again, staff um sees it as, you know, it's a small um component of the overall design, so if planning commission has any comments that are specific to that or wants to ask any questions of the applicant specific to that, um certainly um they can there. Uh, again, a lot of this comes down to the details, so the overall architecture seems to be moving in the right direction with the art deco design style. Um, there's just some missing details with window trims, gutters, roof eaves, awnings, overhangs, roof coping elements and character details of the proposed columns. So you'll see at the end of my presentation, I'm going to note that all of these comments that are included in the incomplete letter will need to be addressed prior to the public hearing pri- uh for this project, so we'll try to detail all of those as best we can. Um, again, lighting, just more details needed um and then revisions to the photometric plan. Um, right now, it appears to be showing that it's noncompliant with our foot candle requirement. And again, particularly on the west elevation adjacent to the residential. So signage, they need to submit a master sign program with full sign plan details. Um, we need clarification on the revision to the overall signage square footage. Um, that might just be, you know, clarification from the applicant with staff. Um, and then again, depending on that discussion, it may require a minor use permit, but but we'll determine that um once we get there. Um, landscape plan, the, again, these plans just will need to be made consistent with the other base plans um that are included in the plan set. Um, wall design details need to be provided. And again, I just uh mentioned that a full set of comments will be provided in the incomplete letter to the applicant and and also to just reiterate that all comments will need to be addressed in the next submittal and prior to the public hearing. Um, environmental review, this project does likely qualify for class thirty-two infill development. Um, for all of the reasons listed here, it's less than five acres, surrounded by urban uses consistent with the, all of the plans and it would not likely, you know, we'll keep assessing this, that a final determination will be made when they submit a full and complete application, but as far as what we have now, it does not appear that it would result in significant traffic noise, air quality or water quality impacts. Um, and in addition to that, there was a av- the Avenue of Flags specific plan MND did address um a lot of these concerns as part of the overall environmental document uh for the specific plan overall. So tonight, the recommendation is that the planning commission um provide direction to the applicant and staff on the proposed plans. And as I mentioned, the applicant team is here as well tonight, available to answer any questions if you have them. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, would the applicant or team members want to add to Andrea's presentation before we get into questions?
Yeah, yeah, Alex Cross, uh, I know, I've seen you before. Uh, the the comment about the uh the wood treatment that is behind the sign. I I think we're gonna eliminate that. Uh, we've been going so back and so much back and forth with our code that is, I'm I'm kinda dizzy right now. We provide this or provide that, what have you. But I think I can get that eliminated from their checklist that they wanted. It's a it doesn't go with it, so I'll I'll make sure that we eliminate that. Besides that, like you mentioned, Andrea, we will work on all the other little details that uh you're recommending and the your consultant has recommended also.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll roll into questions then, uh, beginning with Commissioner Reese, questions?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm glad to hear about the change to the sign. I think that's a move in the right direction. Um. I had some comments about the color. Um, it does feel off. I I don't necessarily have an issue with the brandy cream, but the the Great Plains gold doesn't feel quite right for the architectural style. Um, and it could feel a lot more crisp, I think. Um, I also think that just the brown blocks and paired with the lack of symmetry, kind of pull your eye away from the main entrance point and so you kind of lose the point of arrival. Um, and it makes the building feel a little bit more massive than it is because it's really not that wide of a building. Um. And then the use of, I understand why the restaurant's there and that why it has a separate entrance, but the four elements on that main elevation, uh, the front elevation, um. It just feels a little bit choppy to me. Um, like the restaurant is sort of an afterthought. Uh, it, when you look at, when you compare it to the rear elevation, like the symmetry of that I, to me, looks better. Um. I think those were the main comments that I had. I was also curious of knowing now that there was a gas station before, if any of those tanks had leaked or if they'd done remediation to the soils already.
You know, I'd have to take a look at that. I know there, you know, we can look on the, there, there's a a website that you can look at, so we can definitely.
That that sums up my comments for now.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Romano De Fazio.
Uh, thank you very much, uh Chair, and um nice to meet you. I am also a new uh chairperson, or excuse me, member of the commission and uh this was very interesting to go through because I was unaware um that uh how long this had been in process and found that the art deco elements at slash art modern, I believe. I was a little confused by that because I'm not really familiar with any other buildings that seem to match that architectural style. Um, I don't have a problem so much with the color scheme because it does seem to fit in kind of to the California look, but if we're, you know, truly gonna go by an art deco appearance, then that would not match, but then again, this isn't Miami, so I don't think we need bright neon here. Um, I'm more concerned with the uh issue of the lighting and the folks on that backside that would be uh potentially impacted by that as well as burns and that sort of thing, the night sky issues. Other than that, it did look like you addressed a lot of different elements and um I'll be uh eager to hear. And just a quick question because I am new. Um, knowing that there were a number of items that weren't addressed, was this brought back at this point just to kind of um hit a timeframe? Is that why it was brought back with a number of elements not addressed?
Um, are I, just for clarifying, are you referring to the one year timeframe? Yeah, so um the municipal code requirement doesn't require that they submit it within one year. It just allows them. So the way that the planning commission, when they adopted the resolution for denial back in October of last year, um, they'll, it basically as part of that resolution, they allow, the planning commission at the time allowed the applicant to submit within one year. So whether it's before one year or after one year, it doesn't really matter. It's not really subject to a a timeline per se. Um, again, the applicant has resubmitted an application um after the denial that specifically addresses the concerns with the architecture, which is consistent with what the denial was based upon.
Got it, okay. Uh, the only other point that comes to mind that just jumped out at me when I was looking at the monument signage um is the issue of Arco, welcome to Buelton. Are we in some way, because those two items are so close together, it almost appears that the city of Buelton would be kind of promoting Arco. And I I would feel a little uncomfortable with that. Perhaps we can have a um Buelton specific monument sign either set farther apart or separately only because it seems like we would be endorsing Arco as a business in effect by having them right next to each other. Um, and that's a concern of mine.
Yeah, I think we can work with the applicant on um some of those details.
Yeah, okay, that and that uh that would be it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Yes. Um. I like the added detail that you guys put on the design. I still don't care for the colors at all. I'd rather see some oh, light blues, pale pinks. The base color could be a Navajo white. Doesn't have to be a bright white. But that would but much blend with the art deco that we're trying to go for in this town. And uh I'm not sure about the landscaping. You really can't tell until after the first year on the landscaping, but uh when Bob was here, he stirred everybody in the right direction with landscaping. And um what else do they have in my notes? I think that's about it. It's nice to have my voice back.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Mercado.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, thank the applicant again for uh resubmitting new plans that uh are better for the project. Uh, I had concerns with um Nancy Emerson's, uh, WeWatch comments uh about the lighting on them. And hopefully, because it's in part of the uh letter, those items will be addressed. Um, hopefully also when you come back to the second one, if you could bring color palette, so we can actually see what, if that white is white or the beige is beige or what the blue is, um, that would be helpful. And I was was glad to see that there is more landscaping than what was originally in the original. So I I think that is important, especially because our gateway is uh when you you see that and uh uh I I think with uh your comments being able to work on the monument sign, um, I think that'd be, that's appreciative. So uh I'm looking forward to seeing your your second proposal with us and with more of the details that we can see, but it's good to see that you've addressed a lot of what we asked for in a denial. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so um I am going to issue a wow, this is so much better than the last time. I'm not gonna give you the awesome yet, but maybe next time you'll get the awesome out of me.
I can.
Okay, anyway, um like everyone said, everything is just so much better. Um, glad you're talking about the backdrop of the sign material. Um, I too uh would like to see more color and um and just because I'm really good friends with Google, I Googled it this afternoon and just Googled art deco color palette. And some of the blues and oranges that are in your corporate sign are art deco colors. So I'm like, maybe we could throw some of that orange and blue in as trim, Pete, you know, trim somewhere and that kind of thing, along with these other comments, but I, you know, just for just a teeny bit more wow and a little bit more art deco style. Um. I also um wanted to, wanna see more detail on that, the large monument where, you know, we're welcoming travelers and and locals and everyone to Buelton. Um, and I understand what you're saying on that. I hadn't thought about that. Um, but along with that, I was in the design of it. You know, maybe on that monument, on the corner pieces or the end pieces, you know, you can just do kind of a cap style thing like is on the the columns on the building. Um, just to kind of mirror it, so it's like a mini version of it. And then also if and when or however we put City of Buelton on there, we can certainly do that in a in a uh art deco um font. Yeah, and uh and that, that would just add a whole and just a little thing adds a big dimension to that. Um, those are really all my comments. I think we pretty much agree on everything. I was just gonna overall, again, job well done, bringing it back and um addressing a lot of the issues. Uh, and Andrea's covered that in the next letter that goes out to you, and so I just encourage you to uh, you know, uh be able to address um all of the staff presentation information. Uh, the design review information from the architect and also um incorporate uh what Nancy Emerson with WeWatch has put in there. Um, because we do want night friendly skies and we want uh night friendly skies, especially for that residential behind. Um, and we want to, you know, because we want to have good neighbor policy with everyone. Um, so overall, I think that's it. And again, job well done and we look forward to the next round. The night, and we don't really vote tonight, we just recommend it to go forward, so. The night, and we don't really vote tonight, we just recommend it to go forward, so.
If we come back one more time with you or?
So the typical process is now that we've completed the preliminary review, you work with staff. Um, up until um you've addressed all of the items in the incomplete letter, and then we would schedule it for public hearing. So the next step would be public hearing with the planning commission.
Thank you. Okay, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving on, uh, there are no written communications and planning commissioner comments. Uh, we'll start with one of our green team members, Commissioner Reese.
Thank you, Chair. I have an announcement about a fun little activity tomorrow. It's part of a larger program that SB CAG uh is offering in Boulton at the moment. So there's a easy bike ride uh tomorrow, and it come, it has a lunch also, um, partially covered by SB CAG. Uh, and it's from a eleven thirty to one PM. I think there are still some bikes available. But if you have your own bike, you are definitely welcome to join for the lunch ride, and it's meeting at City Hall. There's a. Opportunity RSVP for the lunch. Um, and also if you, you're in a position where you don't have your own bike, um, you can check with them and see if they still have any. And it's info at traffic solutions dot org.
And I will be joining the bike ride, so.
Nice, I'll be there too.
And and enjoying that delicious.
And Claire too, yes.
And Claire, you're joining?
I've been riding my bike since Tuesday.
Oh, woo.
You're in shape then.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, how many folks did take advantage other than Claire of the free loans?
I think about.
I think about ten.
Fantastic.
So, including Scott, the city manager.
Well, good.
That's great.
Good.
Should be careful of the heat.
Yes.
Yeah, ninety-six in a venue today.
Wow, they're only going from here to.
I love.
Not very far.
A mile. Put a little fan on your bike.
On an electric bike, yeah, it's not too bad.
But that that sums up my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Romano De Fazio, anything?
Um, I also attended the green team meeting and uh. Uh, on behalf of the uh green team slash Boulton uh community garden that my husband is president of. I uh was thrilled that they'd been invited to have a table. I will not be attending, but I believe my husband will be, and I think they were going to try to do a very similar project that they had at uh. Uh, was it Open Streets? Open Streets where they had planted seeds. Uh, so they were excited about that. And uh, I'm sad I'm gonna miss the barbecue. But I am headed south to visit a friend in Camry also.
And I think I will just add regarding the barbecue, and maybe I can do it as part of my planning director report, but just because you're on it. Um, if you are a resident of Boulton, you should have received your mailer, a mailer. Which if you bring that to the barbecue Bonanza, that's basically your meal ticket, so um make sure to bring that if you would like to attend.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sarkia, anything, any comments, compliments?
Um, I missed you guys. We've been uh all absent for a couple of months now.
Yeah, I know.
And oh, I just wanted you guys to know, I did beat, um, it did turn out to be cancer on my uh voice cord. And uh we beat it with radiation.
Nice.
So I can talk again.
Okay.
I still can't sing like Adele.
Well, double welcome back to you then. Uh, Vice Chair, anything?
Uh, congratulations. I don't sing like Adele. Didn't even look like Adele, so I'm good, but uh it's good, nice to be back and uh working again.
Yeah. Awesome.
But I will be working the barbecue though, so.
Great. Yeah, well, we'll all announce that, so if anyone doesn't know, Saturday, not this Saturday, but the next Saturday, July twenty-ninth. Is the annual Boulton BBQ Bonanza at Riverview Park from eleven to two. And Andrea gave us the details on how to get in for lunch.
Yeah, it's free event, but if you bring your your postcard, you can get uh your meal there, your free meal there as well, so.
And that sums it up for us, so uh planning director, any further items?
Sure, um, just a few things. Again, I'd just like to echo everyone. Great to see everyone. I know it's been a couple of months here, a few months, I, about. Two or three months since we've last had a meeting, so it's nice to to be back. Um. We will have at least one meeting in August that we are planning to have, so that's good, so we'll see you again next month sometime. Um, I did just want to mention that um we are in our second review uh with HCD for the housing element, so. Um, I think we're getting close and and close to certification. Um, so we, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we will have that. But um I'll have more to report at the next planning commission uh meeting on that, but we're getting close and making progress, I think, so.
Great.
Hopefully that'll be soon, and that's all I have.
Okay.
And do we know how uh we progressing with in and out?
Uh, yeah, so we are still, um, you know, working with the applicants on a couple of items. Uh, in order to bring that back to planning commission uh for the hearing. But um we're working through those and and I think on that we are also getting closer, but it's, we're just still working through some of those items and. You know, we'll let you know if we're, we're getting to a point where we're um almost ready there to schedule.
It would come back as a public hearing.
That's correct, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Is there any movement on, pardon, on the, on the bowling alley situation?
Um, not, um, I haven't received any updates lately, so I, you know, obviously the property is in escrow, but we haven't, we don't know any details of what the applicant. Or the the new owner, should the escrow through what they plan to do, so we're still, still waiting on that one, but.
Was there a fire there last Friday?
Yeah, there was.
I thought I saw something on.
Behind the water heater plant and then in the river part of it.
I was trying to figure out where, because I saw the picture on the news, but.
Yeah, we saw it.
Yeah.
Because of Steve's tire, it was called a tire fire.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just below his.
Yeah, okay, with that, we will adjourn at six forty-seven PM.
Good job, ladies and gentlemen.
You're good, Andrea.